Okay. Make sure everything is working here. Uh, okay, looks like we're... Working here, I'll make sure you mute that so we don't get a... Good evening, folks. I hope that all of you can hear me out there now. We are on the air here with our second, my second, online town hall meeting. Give me one second, I'm gonna make sure that my blog is set up where people can post... And, uh... Can post on the website questions. Let's see if that commenting is working. Submitting comment, submitting comment. Hopefully it is. Um, thanks all of you for bearing with me tonight. We, uh... I had originally planned to do this at 7:00, but as things happen in the legislative session, we, uh... Sometimes committee schedules, uh, committee, uh, committee meetings get scheduled at the time you need to be someplace else. So, I appreciate all, appreciate all of you being flexible and allowing me to start this at 8:00 tonight as opposed to 7:00. My plan is to try to do one of these a month toward the end of the month while we're in session. Here, here we are at the end of January, I'll try to do another one in about four weeks. And we'll be a little, uh, flexible and, uh, hope you'll bear with me as we move forward on that. Uh, we'll see what, what the last week of February looks like schedule-wise and, uh, try to schedule the time then when we can, when we can do this. Of course, on my website and through email, we'll keep you informed on what, uh, on the date and time of that. And again, thank you very much for all tuning in. I see, uh, on, on here, viewers are starting to tune in and I sure appreciate that, taking time out of your busy schedule to talk, to talk to me and interact with me about things that are going on in the legislative session. The, uh... I'm using a different system this time, and for those of you who tuned in last time, you know, we, uh, we used a service called Ustream. And technically it worked fine. I think the issue that, that was, that I ran, that we ran into was it had ads that popped up every now and then and the, which are fine, I'm a capitalist, I'm happy that people make money. And, uh, I think that the problem arose when, uh, I, I wasn't aware that an ad was going on and I'm continuing to talk as the ad is going on and folks couldn't hear what I had to say and they didn't find that out till afterward. But hey, this is a new thing for me and a new thing for us and we'll just keep plowing forward and look at, uh, how, how all this works. Uh, the big issue that happened today in the legislature, I guess we'll go ahead and tackle that, uh, right now, some of you are probably aware, most of you are probably aware. Uh, Speaker Ralston held a press conference today and outlined, uh, two ethics bills that he is, he has introduced into the House. And, uh, the... We'll get into some of the specifics that Speaker Ralston has delved into in these bills. He, uh... This is really, quite frankly, uh, in legislative speak, this is sort of like the, the opening act. The Senate, I believe, has already introduced a bill, uh, perhaps by, uh, I could be wrong, but I believe by Senator Josh McCune that outlined some things. The Senate passed their own rule, uh, Senate rule which governs activity in the Senate but does, isn't, um, doesn't carry the force of law related to a, a cap, their own version of a cap on gifts that they could receive there in the House, in the Senate, rather, excuse me. Uh, so this is really the, the opening, uh, opening salvo, if you will. There will be now, should this bill pass the House, uh, and of course it's, it's subject to amendment. Speaker Ralston has said there'll be some hearings on this bill that he is, uh, that it has been introduced and, uh, the changes of course could be made in the committee process, uh, so some of these things may be tweaked, new things may be added. And then once it's sent over to the Senate, uh, the Senate, I'm sure will have its input on, on the provisions of this bill and will come back to us and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll see how this thing ends up. So, I say all that to say, as, as always is the case in, in the legislature, how things look now, um, may not be at all what it looks like by the time this, this bill is completed. That being said, here is basic, a basic outline of what, uh, the, what Speaker Ralston announced today. Uh, the bill, he introduced two bills. Uh, one is a little more complex and one's simpler. I'll deal with the, the simpler bill first. Uh, the, the smaller bill does two basic things. It, uh, it seeks to exempt or, or change how local elected officials report and file their, uh, campaign disclosure reports. Uh, a few years ago, the law was changed, uh, in an effort, a good faith effort to try to increase transparency, uh, to require all elected officials down at the local level, every city, every county in Georgia to file their, uh, campaign disclosure reports with, uh, with the Campaign Finance Commission in Atlanta. And there was some, uh, understandable pushback from local elected officials, not in the, not on the idea of disclosure, but more on the idea of, hey, um, some folks in remote areas, internet is not all, not that easy to get, so asking us, asking local elected officials to file electronically presented some problems for some areas of Georgia. So what the legislature did was said, okay, uh, you can, local elected officials can submit their reports in paper. And this created a flood of paperwork that arrived at the Campaign Finance Commission office. And it created a backlog that, uh, they have never recovered from, quite frankly, in the, in the two plus years that this has, uh, law has been in effect. So this bill would modify that and it would basically say, if you're a local elected official and you raise less than a certain amount, um, I haven't seen the final copy of the bill, but the bill that was talked about, uh, in the discussion group, in the working group that the speaker had, uh, put the level at $5,000. So if you're a mayor and you raise, uh, of a small town in South Georgia and you raise less than $5,000, you would take a, you would file a paper copy of that report with your local elected, your local elections office in your community. And that would not be sent to Atlanta. So there's still transparency in that local elected officials, uh, local citizens can go, get a copy of that report and see what their local elected official has raised. Eighty percent of reports that the Campaign Finance Commission dealt with, uh, fall under this $5,000 limit. And that limit is subject to change, it may be moved up or down, there was a proposal to, to take it down to around $2,500. We'll, we'll see how that moves forward. So essentially, uh, it would reduce the paperwork that the Campaign Finance Commission has to deal with by a tremendous amount. And that helps free up resources so that they can do the other things that they are tasked to do. The second part of this bill, uh, this smaller bill deals with, uh, disclosure. The current, current law says there, that a report must be filed as of December, a campaign finance disclosure report for elected officials such as myself has to be filed by December 31st. And, uh, the problem with that is when we start, when we begin our legislative session in January, you have a gap there of about a year. And money is raised. Uh, people hold fundraisers, others who don't fund, uh, hold fundraisers receive checks in donations from people, which is allowable under the law up until the, uh, beginning of the legislative session. So this year, for example, it would have been 13 days. Most years it's a week less than that. So, uh, this bill would require a report to be filed disclosing what money was raised from January 1st through the beginning of the legislative session. And I think this, this is a great idea, something I very much support, uh, an additional layer of disclosure so that, you know, what if any money I received before the legislative session, let us, excuse me, legislative session begins. Uh, currently right now, uh, there's not another report, since this is a non-election year, there's not another report that needs to be filed until the end of June. So you, uh, folks won't know what is raised during that first week of January until the end of June. So I think, I think this is a great idea. Uh, I think both of these items in this particular bill are, are very good ideas and I support it wholeheartedly. Now onto the big bill. Um, it deals with a couple of things, a couple of things that I think folks are, are gonna like. Um, it tweaks some, uh, some issues related to what, what lobbyists must disclose. It, uh, uh, does a couple of things with definition of, of who is a lobbyist, which I'll, I'll, we'll talk a little more about that in just a minute. Um, the big ticket items in this are two things that I think, uh, ethics reformers and activists have really called for. One of them is it restores rulemaking authority to the Campaign Finance and Transparency Commission. And this will allow them to, uh, promulgate rules and help, that, that help them enforce the campaign finance rules and laws that they have on the books now. This is something I think that universally activists and ethics reformers have called for, so I think this is a good thing. The other big ticket, ticket item in this and probably the one that will grab the most headlines and most discussion is, um, a ban on gifts to individual legislators. And what I'm, what, what we mean by that is no, um, no legislator, no, sorry, no lobbyist will be able to take me out to dinner, uh, one-on-one. No lobbyist will be able to buy me a ticket to a, a football or a basketball or sporting event, one-on-one. Uh, what will still be allowed will be, uh, events that are open to all legislators. For example, uh, there are, there are a couple of events, for example, one coming, that's an annual event that comes up, is coming up this Thursday night, uh, where the city of Savannah comes up and invites all legislators to come. And it's an opportunity for them to brag about the great things that are going on in Savannah. So, you know, things that are events like that, that are open to all legislators, all legislators, uh, or events that are available to all Senate members or all members of the House, or all members of the Republican Caucus or the Democratic Caucus. So no more one-on-one lobbying. And I, I think personally, this will greatly reduce the amount of lobbyist money that is spent in Atlanta. There's just a lot of money, uh, the, um, spent on meals and, and tickets and things of this nature. And, uh, so I, you know, the details of this, I'm sure will be, will be tweaked as we move forward. Uh, the Senate and some of the ethics reformers have, have promoted the idea of a cap rather than a, a ban of these type of items. So I think, you know, there'll be a good vigorous debate about that. Uh, you folks know, if you've read my website or kept up with me, um, know that my position, um, I, I, I support a cap, uh, or a ban. Um, I think a ban makes more logical sense because I think a cap, especially the cap that's, that's been tossed out, that has been discussed out there now, which would basically say a dollar per day per lobbyist, um, doesn't really have much effect on the total amount of lobbyist spending. I think that this, this ban that's been proposed in this bill will have an impact on the amount of lobbyist, uh, spending that takes place in Georgia. So, let's go back to one other thing that I mentioned and then, uh, we'll, uh, I'll tell you about a couple of the things that are going on in the legislature and then we'll, I see we've got some questions coming in and I'll, I'll check the email real quick and we might have a few more there. Um, one, one thing that's kind of grabbed some headlines and maybe some pushback from some folks is, uh, the provisions of the bill dealing with who, who is a lobbyist. And it's not easy to define. Um, and I, I think under, under current law, there was, there was a, a rule that was very, very difficult to enforce and very vague. And we, this bill completely strikes that from the law, which I, I think is a good idea. There, there was a rule that said that if 10, if you spent 10% of your time at the Capitol lobbying, then you need to register as a lobbyist. And that's very vague, does that mean 10% of a day, 10% of a week, a month, a year? It's very difficult and it's also difficult to enforce. I think it's difficult on, on people who are coming to the Capitol to define what that means and understand, am I, uh, when I go to the Capitol, am I, do I need to register as a lobbyist, because this rule is very vague. And, um, it's also difficult for me, if somebody comes up and talks to me, uh, at the Capitol and says, hey, I'm, I'm supporting this bill, I don't, I don't know, I don't have any idea if that person is red, is supposed to be registered, registered as a lobbyist. So I hope that removing that particular rule will help clarify and more clearly define, make it less vague who it is that's supposed to be a lobbyist. Now, there's been some talk, uh, I understand, uh, some of the Tea Party groups have pushed back and said that this is an attempt to chill free speech. Um, I, I disagree. And here's why I disagree, there's a provision in there and it's in current law that, uh, someone who is at the Capitol expressing their own viewpoint, um, does not need to register as a lobbyist. That's in current law and this, this bill does nothing to change that. So I don't think, uh, that it is certainly the, not intended to chill free speech and, and I don't think it does. Uh, but this will be an item that's up for debate that, that we'll, uh, weigh in on. Um, I, I guess, I guess speaking quite frankly, I'm a little disappointed that immediately, the immediately reaction is an accusation that we're trying to chill free speech. I think, I think my own personal view, the public has a right to know. If somebody is at the Capitol, spending money, uh, representing an organization and spending money, uh, to be there to lobby and influence the outcome of, of legislation, then the public has the right to know who they are and where their money comes from. And that is what the lobbyist system, the lobbyist registration system is meant to, to deal with. Average citizens who come, individuals who come, uh, for example, we, we'll have a group at the Capitol on Thursday that is there advocating for school choice issues. They will have hundreds of people there who will then fan out across the Capitol and try to talk to any legislator who will listen about an issue that's very important to them. This bill would do nothing, uh, to stop folks from doing things like that. This bill would do nothing from stopping any of you from contacting me, from coming to the Capitol to see me, to, or to see another legislator who isn't your representative to, uh, to advocate for behalf of a bill, uh, a, a, a bill. So, I think, you know, that obviously, um, as, as everything else in this bill, uh, uh, it's, it's subject to change and subject to be tweeted, uh, excuse me, tweaked. Uh, I suppose it could be tweeted too, but tweaked. And, uh, this is certainly not the, the end result here. As I mentioned, this is the opening salvo. I saw, uh, a question, uh, that kind of, uh, directly relates to this, asking, Buzz, do you see the Speaker's ethics proposals getting bipartisan support in the House enough to move? I really believe it will move. Um, excuse me. I think that legislators at the Capitol understand, especially on the issue of a cap or ban of gifts, that something has to be done. The public is demanding it and something has to be done. So I think, uh, that, uh, that will mean that there's, that there's momentum behind this effort and a, a bill will pass. Uh, whether it looks exactly like this, uh, remains to be seen. The Senate, uh, has, has ideas as well, uh, some of them are very good ideas, uh, as Speaker Ralston himself has acknowledged that there, uh, some of the Senate's ideas are very good ones. And we, uh, will, we will take them up. Let me do a quick look here, uh, see if there are some more questions or, uh, along the lines of ethic reform. And of course feel free to post any of these questions, uh, on my website at voteforbuzz.com. Okay, here's, uh, this sort of relating to this, um, a question said, everyone is a lobbyist? No, everyone's not a lobbyist. And I think, uh, you know, the, the bill will be available on the internet after midnight tonight. Uh, that's just the general process of when a bill is introduced, that at midnight, the clerk's office loads it up and makes it available to the public. So we, you'll be able to see this tomorrow. I'll post a link to it on my website. Uh, and I think you can see, uh, no, not everyone is a lobbyist. Uh, individuals have the right to come to the Capitol and talk to any legislator they want, expressing their viewpoints. Uh, and, and groups have the right to come down, as I, as I mentioned earlier. Groups have the right to come down and advocate on issues that they care about. And certainly we don't want to do something that's, that chills free speech and, and violates the First Amendment. Uh, not a legal scholar, but my reading of it and my, uh, looking over the bill, uh, I don't think it does. I think, I think we've got exemptions in there for average citizens. Okay, um, scanning through... Looking at a, we've got a few more questions here? All right, um, here's a, here's a three-part question, we'll take these one at a time. The first one says, should average people be aware and familiar with open records, open meeting standards and rules? I'm not sure why it would be necessary. Uh, that's, that's a good question and I, I'll profess, I do not know all the ins and outs of open records. Um, I think that's something that we should take a look at. Um, I, I will honestly say I have a concern, uh, about doing a complete open records law for the legislature because some of you, you know, my constituents email me things, sometimes they're emailing me descriptions of, uh, a very personal matter that may be, uh, you know, something that they don't really want let out and that things that a legislator can help them, help them with. I think we have to be careful about that. Open meetings, uh, every meeting, every committee meeting, uh, I believe, in the House, uh, is, every, every formal committee meeting is open to the public and, and broadcast on the internet. Uh, but there's, there's certainly some things we should look at there, uh, about sunshine laws and things like that. Uh, so I, I'm certainly open to, open to, open to debate on that and think that's something we need to take a look at. Next question, what sort of input and collaboration do you have with Gwinnett County Public School Leadership? Uh, I, um, this is a multi-part question, so let's deal with that first. I, um, I know, I know our school board members, uh, I've met various times with, uh, with, Superintendent Willbanks. Uh, they have, uh, a representative down at the Capitol who keeps us informed on, as education issues move through the House, on, on what impact they might have on Gwinnett County Public Schools. So I think, you know, we have, we have a fairly good relationship with Gwinnett County Public Schools and that we, there's a, a good exchange of information as we move forward on, and deal with issues. Do I have any, do you have any stance on Article 21 revisions of the government? Um, I, I hope I'm interpreting this right. Let's see. Any way we can keep state funding where it is and increase it while requiring, oh, excuse me, requiring accountability from the school system, there seems to be a gap in accountability and consequences. Um, Education Chairman, uh, Brooks Coleman has talked about some bills that we may see this session that they've been working on. Uh, the, the intent of this would be to provide school systems that are performing well and those, some of those standards, that definition of what performing well means would be spelled out, to, to allow them greater flexibility and freedom and, and free them from some of the state regulations that, uh, that there currently are. I think we want the state, we, we wanna, we wanna loosen restrictions on the school systems that are performing well and, uh, help those systems that are performing poorly. So I think there is a bill in the works to do some of that and, uh, we'll, uh, it hasn't been introduced yet, uh, but this is something that the Education Committee under the chair, chairmanship of Brooks Coleman from Duluth has been working on. And it's, it's certainly an idea that I, a theory that I certainly support. There's no reason to have burdensome regulation on, uh, on any school, but there's certainly no reason to, for the state to have to be micromanaging school systems that are doing, doing a great job. And I think Gwinnett, uh, does a great job and would probably be in line for some of those, releasing, uh, from some of those restrictions that, uh, currently are in the law. Uh, I'm sorry, I, Article 21, um, not entirely sure what you mean, uh, but I'll answer as best I can. Uh, perhaps you mean Article 20, which is, I believe, the code section that deals with education. We repealed a law, a chunk of Article 20 last year and I believe some more, we're looking at repealing some more of those laws to remove those regulations from all school systems. I hope that answered, I hope that answers your question. If not, please post something again in the, uh, uh, in the comment section here. Another question, is there any new legislation being proposed that would affect the entertainment industry here in Georgia? I don't, uh, I don't believe so right now. We, last year we had a couple of bills, uh, dealing with the tax, tax credits in a couple of ways. One is dealing with the film industry, movies. And that is, that has really been a boon for Georgia. Um, billions of dollars of economic impact in the form of movies being built here. The old Lakewood, uh, Lakewood area that was kind of run down in a part of Atlanta, uh, Screen Gem, Stream Gems, Gems, a big movie production house has, uh, taken that over and built that and restored that, which is a great thing for the movie industry here in Georgia. Uh, there was another bill, uh, dealing with, uh, video games. Oddly enough, uh, video game, gaming has be, uh, has become a big deal in Atlanta. We're sort of the Silicon Valley, so to speak, of video gaming. And, uh, we had some, some tax incentives to help some of those companies, new startup companies. Uh, another bill that, that my friend Representative Mike Dudgeon is working on is a renewal, uh, or extension of an angel investment tax credit. One big problem that we hear a lot from the technology industry and especially, and , uh, new businesses, startups, uh, is that Atlanta really lacks, the Atlanta area in Georgia, in our area of Georgia really lacks good capital, uh, excuse me, venture capital. And so the angel investment tax credit, uh, helped, helped bring some of that here. Uh, there's a whole lot more we need to do, uh, to, to do that. One bill we passed last year which, uh, may not make a huge impact, but it's more of a symbolic one and that was allowing certain, uh, the state pension funds, not the teacher pension fund, but some of the other state pension funds to invest in venture capital. Uh, we were the last state in the, in the United States to lift that prohibition. And I think that sent a, a signal hopefully to the venture capital world that, uh, that, Georgia's serious and wants, uh, wants venture capital and wants to be an incubator of new business, which we certainly are, uh, certainly are. Georgia Tech and the University of Georgia and Emory University and, uh, many of our other, uh, colleges and universities, um, do a tremendous job of incubating new business and we lose a lot of them. Once, one stat I heard in the technology sector, 75% of new startups, uh, leave Georgia within the first, first three years of their existence. And they, they're moving to places like Dallas, they're moving to places like Boston if they're in the medical technology sector, uh, and they're moving to Silicon Valley. And that has a lot to do with these venture capital companies that provide that second round of venture and, uh, capital investment, just, uh, just aren't here, aren't here in Atlanta. So that's something that we need to work on. Okay, we've got a, another question here, says, I like the idea of parent trigger, uh, legislation. Can you add an appeal process when local districts deny applications? There is a, a bill that was just introduced yesterday, um, by Representative Ed Lindsey of Atlanta, that, uh, that deal, that deals with this, this issue. Uh, I have, I confess, I haven't had a chance to read it yet. I'll try to include that in, in the newsletter at the end of the week so folks can take a look at it. Um, and, and as he described it to me, essentially there, there would be a pretty, there would be a, a pretty high bar to, uh, to threshold that would allow, uh, forced, for parents, for example, to be, be able to take over a school. Uh, it's a big deal to run a school, really a big deal. I would never even attempt to try to run a school. Uh, and thank you very much to all those of you out there who want to do that. It's very, uh, not easy. Let's take a look here and see if we have any other questions. We're about half an hour into- We're about half an hour into this here, and trying to keep all of you, keep it short and sweet, so we'll just look and see if we have a few more questions here. And again, this video will be saved, and we'll post it on the website, so you can watch later, and of course, I can be reached, pretty accessible. The information to contact me is on my website. My email address is buzzbrockway@gmail.com, which you're happy to email me at any time. We might be done with questions. One thing I guess I'll mention, before we wrap things up, that I know a lot of you are probably interested in, there's a number of pieces of gun legislation that have been introduced into the House. There's a series of four of them, that freshman legislator Representative Charles Gregory has introduced, and I know some of you folks have emailed me about those, not tonight, but other nights. I've talked with Representative Gregory about them, I signed on to one of them. One of them, he's likely to pull back, perhaps will pull back, because another representative introduced it, and that was HB 90, which I co-signed on as well. HB 90 would take away the government's ability to collect, you know, just start rounding up firearms and weapons in a state of national emergency. Okay, we've got two more questions coming in. Representative Gregory, let me finish that thought, sorry. Representative Gregory is, when I talked with him the other day, is gathering some support for a couple of his other bills. He may have dropped, formally dropped, one of them, and he's talking to other legislators, trying to build some more support for his other ones. So, we'll keep you informed as those move along early in the session. All right, we've got a couple more questions here. Has there been any conversation in moving to a zero state income tax like Tennessee and Florida? As we have such a great entrepreneurial entertainment and sports community, I've seen some in the music side move to either Florida or Tennessee to save tax revenue, which moves it out of Georgia. Thoughts? I would love the idea of, oh, somebody else joining our hangout here. Sorry for interrupt, for losing my train of thought there. I love the idea of going to a zero income tax. I think the big nut that you're going to have to crack there is the taxing of groceries. We don't currently tax groceries in Georgia, and if you're going to, if you're going to eliminate the income tax, you're going to have to tax groceries. So, I think that is something that we're going to have to grapple with. We had a tax council report two years ago, that, hold on a second, I think we're getting a little feedback here. My friend Charles Muddley here joined us on the hangout here, and I'm picking up your microphone there, Charles. Maybe there's a way, Charles, that you could mute that. We'll see if that helps out. All right. Getting back to, thank you, Charles, I appreciate that. Thanks for joining us. To get back to the income tax, we had a special counsel on tax reform that produced a report a couple of years ago, about two years ago, when it first got elected. And they proposed cutting the corporate and personal income tax in half, and taxing, putting a small sales tax on a whole range of services, including groceries. So, I think, you know, we can start to move in that direction. I would certainly support that. We're going to have to grapple with the issue of taxing groceries. Governor Deal has indicated he doesn't really support that, and there's some concern, I think, among a lot of folks about the impact on the poor. I think we can deal, I'm a supporter of Congressman Rob Woodall's fair tax, so I think that those are issues that we can get around, work around, and keep a fair tax system. Because we are, you know, as the commenter points out, Florida and Tennessee don't have income taxes. Florida, of course, benefits a lot from the entertainment industry, the hospitality and tourism industry, which helps them a lot too. But that's a good question, thank you very much. Is that, there is a movement nationally for states to nullify federal laws that are considered abusive, abusive of constitutional law. What is your feel on that subject? This came up at our last town hall, and last time I said, I professed that I didn't know a whole lot about it, and then just a quick reading of history showed that it hadn't been all that successful. As I said, it would, I've done some more reading on it. And I think there, you know, there might be some things we can do along these lines. We have a bill related to weapons here in Georgia, that I co-sponsored, that would more or less, I suppose nullify is the word you could use, would more or less nullify federal gun laws relating to guns here in Georgia, similar to a bill perhaps that was introduced in Wyoming. So, I think there's some movement on that. I think you saw, you know, Governor Deal telling the federal government that we are not going to participate in Medicare expansion, we're not going to participate in the healthcare exchanges. That was a form of nullification. And I think, you know, this is an issue, this is something we need to work on and continue on as we move forward here. This is, you know, this is a great battle for our time, is trying to reassert the rights of states to get more back to that model of federalism that the founding fathers, the founding fathers intended for us. And thanks for the question, I'll continue to study on it and learn more, because I know I have a lot more to learn. Another question, thanks for addressing firearms legislation. You're very welcome. This is going to be a hot issue. Interestingly enough, as you folks probably all know, I went to Georgia Tech, and so I got a call, an email the other day, from the Georgia Tech College Republicans, asking me to come down. They had a speaker who was coming, who couldn't make it at the last minute, so I was there, and we were talking about, should, the issue of should college students be allowed to carry firearms on campus? That's become a big issue at Georgia Tech. They're right in the heart of Atlanta, and there's been some crime in and around, mostly around the campus, that has affected students. And we had a nice, good, robust debate on that subject, and it's something that I would support. I understand some of the, we had a good debate on, you know, some of the practical aspects of implementing that, and there are some concerns. You don't want, you know, college is famous for wild parties, you know, so you have to be careful, you need to make sure that students are going to be responsible, and there's some procedures in place how to handle that. But, yeah, we've got a, actually, oddly enough, that ties in with the next question we've got here. I believe our college students at Georgia Tech are being victimized due to being in gun-free zone. Do you support efforts to allow them to carry? I do. And as I mentioned, we had a good discussion on that with the college students last night. I told them, quite frankly, I think the political reality is that it is going to, you know, we've got some work. If you are like me and you support that legislation, we've got some work to do convincing more colleagues, more of my colleagues, that this is a good idea, and convincing the public at large. And I understand, I think that the presidents of universities are concerned about it, don't really support it, and, you know, there are some legitimate, practical issues that they raise, you know, with alcohol, very readily available on most college campuses, you have to be careful how you implement that policy. But nevertheless, I think there's a way, there are other states that do this, and I think we can learn from that and figure out a way to make it work. All right, well, it's about 8:40. Last time, we did about 43 minutes, so we'll clock in to about 40 minutes. And again, you folks can reach me on my webpage, buzz, voteforbuzz.com, got my Capitol contact information, and of course, you can reach me by email at buzzbrockway@gmail.com. And we'll, as I mentioned, we'll do another one of these at the end of February, as we get closer to that date. I'll announce the specific, pick a specific date and time to do that. As the legislature moves along, the schedule gets busier, and so, you know, I'll try to give you as much notice as I can, maybe about a week before, we'll pick a date and pick a time and do this. And any feedback, you know, as I mentioned, this is the first time I've hosted a thing like this on Google Hangouts, and hopefully, any feedback you have on the technical nature of this, was the audio fine, did it work well? I'd love to know. From what I'm seeing here, looking at this, it seems to have worked just fine. So, we'll, I sure appreciate all of you joining me. When this video is, we'll post the full video of this on the website, so that you folks can see it, and it'll also be on my YouTube channel. Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for joining us, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks. Bye-bye.